Are we expecting Mr. Correio tonight?
He just texted me that he is stuck in the Sacramento airport. Waiting for his flight that is delayed.
So is he gonna be going online?
Don't believe so.
Okay, well.
I don't know that he was even provided a lengthy anticipation of being here, but his flight is in.
Alright, oh well. See what's that. Oh, I don't want to lose that pen. There's a pen. Alright, we'll call a meeting in order. City Clerk, can we please get a roll, please?
Mayor Hoffauer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Cudillo, Bishop.
Here.
And Bettencourt.
Here.
We have a call.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Correio.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Might as well. Okay, uh, public comments on closed session items. IT, you have anybody?
Nobody at this time.
Nothing at this time, okay. City Clerk, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
And I look out at the crowd. Anybody in the audience? Anybody?
There must be high.
Anybody? Bueller? Bueller? Okay, we'll go ahead. Uh, city attorney, you want to announce that we're gonna be discussing here?
Uh, so we will be, uh, discussing the items listed on the agenda.
Alright, that's descriptive. Alright, excellent. Alright, we will return. Alright, we'll get started here in just one moment. We got a couple of council members still out. Regrouping here. Can we check out, are they coming or?
Oh, it's nice and warm in here. Oh, it's freezing.
No, we got, yeah. We got, city attorney coming?
Yeah, he can just step out for a minute.
He's gonna, he, but he has to make the report out.
Right, he'll be back in a minute.
Alright, city attorneys, uh, delayed on another matter here, so what we will do is, uh, we'll have the, uh, city manager give a report out from the closed session, please.
Mayor and council met in closed session with Juan Correio absent. Uh, no reportable action on the items related to the agenda this evening for closed session.
Well, that was easy. We will go ahead and adjourn at closed session. We did a roll call at the beginning of the meeting. I will do a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence in honor of our troops. This evening, I'd like to have us keep, uh, in that moment of silence, uh, these, uh, recent victims. There was a victim of a traffic accident uh, over on Rancho Vista Boulevard, and there was a young man that, um, that, uh, was a victim of a homicide over at, um, Ray Kerr Park, Jacob Taylor. Also, we had twenty-some deputy trainees that were injured in a tragic accident on, uh, down at, uh, East LA Academy, so if we could include all them in our thoughts this evening, I would appreciate that, and we'd like to adjourn the meeting, um, with them, for them, okay? Alright, so we'll go ahead and stand, and Mr. Loa, could you lead us in the pledge, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Somebody, can you name? Sure. So we have, uh, something else that we can use to award to clutter up our, uh, shelves. We seem to be doing a lot of those lately. So, um, you know what, I'm gonna let you, uh, explain this.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, very recently, uh, IT had submitted an application to MISAAC, which is the Municipal Information Systems Association of California. Uh, it's basically a community of IT leaders throughout municipalities of California. In that, there is an award for those that meet or exceed the technology practices for the city. Um, I'm very happy to announce that we were one of just a few cities that were selected to win the award. Uh, this is our fourth year in a row, so I'm very, very proud of our team and the entire city for thank you for helping us, uh, achieve this award.
Well, so, yeah, how do they grade that, you know? Is it just me calling you going, I can't get my laptop on, or?
If it were that easy. No, it's, it's based on best practices, based on security measures, and basically, I mean, there's a lot of different criteria. There's a series of a hundred and thirty-seven questions that were asked, and you have to meet what's graded by other IT leaders across the state. You have to meet a four-to-five star rating on each of those questions, and hit ninety percent to achieve this award.
There you go. And you'll be happy to know, my printer works today, so. Alright, moving on. So, uh, do I have a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda this evening, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Loa, second, by Ms. Bettencourt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? That carries four zero one. Uh, with Mr. Correio absent. Public comments on listed agenda items excluding public hearings. You may address the council once per meeting during public comments. This portion of the comment period is listed on any item on the agenda excluding public hearings, if any. Public comment on public hearing items, if any, will be heard when that matter is considered. To address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker form and submit it to the city clerk now, before we, uh, get done, uh, reading this little statement here. Uh, each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak. The additional time is allotted for non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk over here with, uh, seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will, uh, will simply be added to the administrative record. If you are attending a meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, click raise your hand. Press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and begin speaking when called. Think we all know how to do that by now. So the items on the agenda, uh, that are listed are the consent calendar items eleven-one through eleven-eight, and the workshop presentation. Uh, IT, do you have any, uh, requests to speak on items eleven and twelve?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
We have Jason Zink.
Yes, Mr. Zink. Which item, sir?
Uh, this is, uh, I'd like you guys to poll eleven point two. And, uh, this is about the, uh, city selling a hundred and eighteen acres on Avenue M in Tenth Street West uh, for two point seven five million. You guys giving a loan to the person purchasing the property for two point seven five million of city-owned property. I've, uh, been, uh, the lack of transparency when it comes to this property in particular, and a lot of properties, but this property in particular really makes people scratch their heads, makes me scratch my head. Why would you sell the most prime piece of property in Antelope Valley right off the freeway, Tenth Street West, Avenue M, where the courthouse is, right across the street from the courthouse, for two point seven five million? A hundred and eighteen acres? The hard corner alone, if you were to sell that to a gas station and a fast food place, would, a loan sell for two point seven five million? So you're giving the, the other hundred acres away for free? Let's just say it's worth two, uh, two million. And you sold the, the land. You're selling the land for seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's six thousand dollars, sixty, uh, what is it? I gave it to you guys. Sixty-nine hundred and forty-four dollars per acre. Who in Antelope Valley wouldn't buy prime property, all the infrastructure in, paved road, for sixty-nine hundred dollars an acre? The property right next door, seventy-five acres, just sold in two thousand twenty-two for six million dollars. And it's not even on the hard corner. Six million. You guys spent millions bringing infrastructure, the sewer lines, uh, expanding Tenth Street West and Avenue M to four lanes. You're giving this property away, but at the same time, you're telling me we don't have, uh, proper, uh, money for youth programs? We don't have money to replace street, uh, uh, city, uh, uh, signs? Preserve the, you know, Inum Park? Or the, Inum Lake, the land around Palmdale Lake? I think this is an outrage. I, there's a lack of transparency, and this property went before a hearing officer. It didn't even go before the whole planning commission. This is a questionable piece of property, and I do not want this property sold. This property's worth ten million dollars, and you're selling it for two point seven five million. The most prime property in Antelope Valley.
Thank you, sir. Any other items?
No more public comments.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? I'd like to, I'll go ahead and pull eleven point two, and, uh, we have staff that can address that, because I don't think that's the case. We're not selling it for two point seven five million. So, you guys over here to address that?
We don't have eleven point one first.
That's correct.
We're pulling, I'm, I'm just gonna ask to have that item pulled.
Okay.
Should I make a motion for the remaining ballots of the calendar?
You may.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bishop to approve the balance of the consent calendar, eleven-one through eleven-eight, with the exception of eleven-two. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Very good. Staff? So I think there's a misunderstanding of what's going on here, sir?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, uh, for your consideration tonight is simply a loan agreement that's tied to that, uh, that particular property. The property is not owned by the city. It's owned by the successor agency, and this is, uh, the original deal was something that was done several years ago. So, for your consideration today, it's simply a, a loan agreement. Uh, the terms that are outlined here, where the city would, um, receive a loan fee of a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred dollars, plus, uh, fourteen percent interest on that loan, uh, for the, what we hope is only gonna be a ninety-day period in order to allow that project to move forward. So again, city does not own the property. Uh, the old successor agency does. It's tied to an old deal, um, that was done several years ago. All we're doing is providing a funding mechanism to help that project move forward, and, um, the city is getting compensated pretty, um, pretty well in order to do that, for that short period of time.
Okay, so this two point seven five is, is, is approximately a ninety-day loan. The, the property's already in escrow, and the, the intent of this is to facilitate extending that escrow period? Or can you help us, I'm trying to understand, and for the sake of the issues that Mr. Zink brought up, you know, why are we doing a loan?
Sure, there was a, uh, there was a delay in the issuing of some of the, some state permits associated with the, with the site that is gonna go beyond the end of the year when, uh, the property needed to close escrow. So again, we anticipate a ninety-day period, uh, in order to finalize that. We actually have a call with CDFW this Friday to finalize some of those things. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we had this in place, ready to go, if we needed to pull the trigger, um, to allow the funding to be, so that we can make sure that we can close the fir-, uh, the escrow before the end of the year. But again, just to be clear, uh, it is not a city, uh, for your consideration, it's simply just the loan part of it. Um, the agreement is completely separate. The agreement is with the successor agency, um, and again, um, uh, there is a
Excuse me, sir, sir? I think, I, we all know that, so. Alright. Okay. Any other questions by the council?
I have a couple. So, the successor agency is overseen by a, oh, by a committee, right, which is a state committee? And they made, they gave approval of this arrangement, uh, when this deal was originally made. Is, is that my understanding?
Correct. I believe it was in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and so we are, uh, contractually bound by the terms of that agreement. And, um, may you do agree with that, right? But we had, uh, with these same purchasers, which is the ones that made the, the, the deal to begin with.
Yes.
Trying to find the spot. There were a number of extensions that were made to the escrow originally. And then, uh, I believe this council voted to cancel that escrow. But another proposal came through, and there was either a threat of or a lawsuit filed for, I imagine it was specific performance, or at least that threat was, for specific performance, to stand by the contract that had been made a few years before. And because it was a prospect, uh, which at the time seemed very real, uh, to bring in a major employer uh, to this corner, we went ahead with it. This very same thing. That particular, uh, possible employer pulled out. And, uh, so then we were right back at square one. And now there, there appears to be, uh, another, uh, entity which, uh, has very good credentials. I have, I've had, as you know, Mr. Garbey, some real misgivings about this. But there is a proposal that could bring a lot of jobs here.
Correct.
Um, I've had the opportunity, which you've allowed, you've, you've helped me become involved in, in discussions with, uh, a person that, uh, an authority for that particular entity. And a lot of my misgivings regarding whether that could fall through were laid to rest. But I still have concerns about the underlying agreement, which is what is before us tonight. Uh, as to whether we should enter into this loan agreement for these two companies to, um, purchase this property. And I believe you have counsel standing by to explain why we should do this, um.
Y- yes, um, counsel.
I, I, I'm maybe the same questions. Oh, I didn't get the special meeting, so, um.
I guess I was the squeaky wheel.
Yeah, well, I asked the same questions in the briefing, I think, but, yeah.
So, uh, we do have Murray, Murray Kane, uh, on the line, uh, that can kind of help walk through some of the, um, some of the support, how we laid out the agreement to make sure that the city is in a good position, if for whatever reason.
Well, I think it's a two-part question, and, and, uh, good evening, Mr. Kane. It's good to see you again. Um, I think it's a two-part concern. The first one is, uh, are we bound, uh, by the terms of the escrow? And I, I believe I know the answer to that, is probably yes. And if we don't abide by the terms of that escrow, we would, we'd be exposed, uh, to serious litigation, uh, which we have our hands full already. The other side.
Can I follow up on that question? So, if there's a date that an escrow expires, how does that expose us to litigation, other than just the chronic threat of litigation that we keep getting from these guys?
Murray, can you?
Yes, uh, actually, uh, what happened was, as mentioned, uh, there was a settlement agreement, uh, to avoid litigation entered into in December of two thousand twenty between the successor agency and the developers. And in that settlement agreement, there was an outside closing date uh, that, as has been mentioned, has been extended a number of times. The outside closing date now, as we speak, is December thirty-first, uh, twenty-two. Uh, this loan agreement would allow that escrow to close, um, and, uh, and the benefits of the economic development and the creation of jobs to accrue to the community. Uh, the, if, if the escrow doesn't close, the, uh, purchase and sale of an agreement would, um, evaporate and would no longer be in effect. Um, the, uh, however, uh, before the city, the
Don't disrupt again, sir, please.
The property is not owned by the city. I want to stress that the property is not owned by the city. It's owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. That successor agency is under legal obligation to sell the land in accordance with a long-range property management plan approved by the Department of Finance. That legal obligation would be in jeopardy if this loan, uh, if this, if this escrow does not close by the end of the year. Because the successor agency, the property would then be subject to the Surplus Lands Act procedures, uh, a law that's been recently adopted by the state legislature.
Okay, hold on, Murray. So what, what stops us from, uh, dealing with the, um, end user on this if the escrow falls apart? Is there a reason why we can't?
Uh, actually, we can, and we, and we have. Uh, we've entered into, in, in the settlement agreement, we've entered into extensions which mandate, uh, put mandates on, on the purchaser to deal with whoever the successor agency tells them to deal with. In, uh, in this case, the people who have recently evinced an interest in developing the land and, and bringing a lot of jobs to the city. So it's not up to the purchaser to pick who develops the property at this point. It's only up to the successor agency and the city, um, as long as the property can close escrow by December thirty-first. If the escrow can't close by December thirty-first, the property becomes surplus lands under the Surplus Lands Act. It must go through a number of procedures. Uh, the agreement will go away, and the, uh, any new, the successor agency would not be able to sell the property without the county oversight board having to approve the property, the project, without the Department of Finance having to approve the project, and a lot of other, uh, affordable housing procedures that would have to happen. So the economic development opportunity is in jeopardy, um, if the escrow does not close by December thirty-second.
So, so it's my understanding that as long as the escrow is in place, then the then the middleman that we're dealing with is obligated to continue dealing with the guy that is, is coming forward, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then, if, if this escrow fails to close on December thirty-first, all that evaporates. We can never, we cannot go back to that end user to come into the property. At that point, the property becomes surplus and must be offered to low-income housing developers first.
Correct. Through a good, uh, the successor agency would have to use good faith efforts to make the property available to affordable housing, and go through a time-consuming and complicated procedure to do that. Um, all, uh, and then the city, the vacant land would continue to sit there, uh, and could not be sold to, uh, any developer, uh, no matter how advantageous the project was to the city.
So we, so that, so if this fell out of escrow, we can't, we can't put a sign on there, for sale, broker cooperation? We have to, okay.
And, and not only that, but even when the affordable housing procedures are done, the city no longer would be in control of the end user, because it would have to be approved by the county oversight board to the successor agency, uh, which is, um, uh, um, and, and also would have to be approved by the State of California Department of Finance. Right now, if we close by December thirty-first, the city will remain in control of who develops that property.
Okay, I think that answers a lot of my questions, uh. And, and I want to add that in terms of the, uh, I guess, end user, as being described here, uh, has, the difference between this end user and the previous end user is that this, uh, this end user has already invested a considerable amount of money to come here. And, uh, to me, that means a commitment. Uh, that would, uh, that assures that that's gonna go through, no matter what happens in the economy. My concern has been that because the economy is changing for the worse, and we, we're, um, encountering strong headwinds, right? And a lot of businesses are now receding, and I just said they're pulling back in their expansion plans, but this particular
To avoid loss of previous end user.
Right, and this particular one, uh, is invested. And, uh, and there were other, uh, assurances that I believe have already been made with the city, uh, that, uh, I think we, I think we ought to go ahead and approve this.
As, as far as the end user, can you speak to any of the benefits they may bring, so the public can understand what the city's working on and why this is so important?
General benefits, yes.
Yes, gen-, right, general benefits.
Just yet, but, um, this facility will bring, uh, approximately eight hundred jobs to the area. Um, it, you can say it's a Fortune five hundred company.
Um, with a good reputation, and as, uh, Councilman, or Mayor Protem Loa alluded to, um, the unique situation here is that they're privately owned and self-financed, so they're not relying on loans or other monies to make this project happen.
So they're, they're bringing the money to the table?
Yes. Very reputable company. Very reputable. Cash-ready, lots of jobs. Yes.
Uh, the unfortunate part is that, um, if there is an unfortunate part, ultimately, there isn't, but in, in the short term, in terms of what we're approving tonight, which is this loan, is that, um, somebody made a very good deal for themselves, uh, which had bound our hands. And, uh, according to what Mr. Kane has presented, really is a very dismal outcome if we don't approve this. Uh, because we would lose the opportunity to, uh, bring this, uh, end user, and that we're using the word, uh, with a prospect of bringing a lot of, of, of employment. It looks like this is really gonna happen.
Yes.
And the, the, the part, the, the part that really, um, disturbs me is that, uh, someone is gonna end up with a lot of profit. But in the long run, the city will benefit, and so will our residents, though.
Correct.
I don't want to say any more than that.
I think I said, when this thing started, these guys aren't gonna develop it, they're just gonna flip it.
So if this is a Fortune five hundred company that's coming, can't they afford to extend this escrow? I mean, why are we giving them a loan?
We're not giving the loan to the end user.
Okay, the loan is to?
To the, uh, initial party that, uh, successor agency entered into agreement in with, uh, Mr. Kane had described. So the only reason they haven't closed escrow at, at this point is that there's been a delay in, uh, receiving the last permits needed in order to have the site fully entitled. is that there's been a delay in, uh, receiving the last permits needed in order to have the site fully entitled. Um, had they received those permits, they would have closed a long time ago.
So their principles are bound to not be able to close until those permits are in hand?
Well, well, much like when, when we do our due diligence and we enter into agreement, we want to make sure that what we are proposing to build on a particular site checks all the boxes and, and is fully entitled as the private sector would as well. So there, they wanted to make sure that their project can move forward as planned. Um, and until they get those final assurances, they're not going to close escrow, just like the city would do in any similar.
So what happens, what happens if the state, uh, has a couple of people start raising cane with them? Sorry, Murray. And, uh, uh, that they, that they don't, they don't like the environmental report, they don't like the Joshua Tree, uh, preservation plan. They don't like the time of day or where the sun's rising. What happens then if these guys says, we're not dealing with you guys, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're out of here?
So my understanding, again, all of the things that you had mentioned had already taken place. So there, there's an environmental document already approved and, um, in place for this project. Um, well, all of this is now is just a, a permitting issue. These are permits that the state issues all the time, so it's more of a procedural, um, thing rather than.
So a state bureaucratic, uh?
Yes, and I know it's hard to believe, but the, there's some delays, uh,
I'm shocked, yeah.
There that unfortunately created this situation, but we're just trying to make the best of what we can. And again, at the end of the day, we're going to have a lot of good jobs in the community and, and welcoming a ra- a, a new business, uh, very reputable to the community, which, um, will help spur more projects in, in Palmdale as well.
Commandee Chip, anything more on that? Mr. Bishop, the fellow? Okay, staff, want to add anything to that before we call for you? Do you have a motion on this item eleven point two, please? Move, uh, move to approve the agreement?
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second? Okay. What do you want to do? You guys want a roll call vote or you just want to take a voice vote? All in favor to approve eleven point two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. If anybody still has, uh, further questions and doesn't really understand it, um, Luis is back there can, uh, help, uh, answer any further questions on that item. Can we have item number twelve point one? Is, uh, the, um, Applied Physiology Program, Psychology Program? Presentation, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we bring you, um, an update and presentation of the Certificate and Applied Positive Psychology Program known as CAP. I am Nardi Lopez, Assistant to the City Manager, City Manager's Office. Um, before we start off, we'd like to ask the council very quickly, um, what is it that you most want for your kids, your family members, for yourself?
Health and happiness.
Yes, we can say, right, resiliency, hope, positivity, growth mindset, that when life throws obstacles at us, we can get through them. We don't forget things, but we can get through it and see light at the end of the tunnel, right? And so reduce, um, depression, anxiety, and all those things that we face. Um, so that is what we are going to talk about here and what this program is designed to help us. It gives us tools, strategy, skills, and strengths that contribute to the things that you just mentioned, right? That we, we would like even for ourselves. Um, today, co-presenting with me is Luis Aloro. He is on the screen here, Zoom. He is with the Wellbeing Lab and he was our cohort instructor. Also joining us here in our audience is some of our CAP participants. And they came to support and some of them will have an opportunity to briefly share their experience through the, through the program with you. Um, why? Why would the city engage in offering a psychology-focused program? Um, because there's a need for it in our community, a need to improve the well-being of people across the Antelope Valley to build meaningful connections and coalitions that result in positive outcomes for our residents. So as we move along, um, what is mental health? You know, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. And those are two words that are being used quite frequently lately. Um, but they're words that represent something that is so important to all of us, right? Because it involves our emotional psychology, uh, psychological and social well-being. And that is important in everything we do, especially in the relationships that we have, right? Because life is about relationships. From the moment we are born, we are forming relationships with our mother, with our families, and along our life. And so it's very important to be strong in our mental health. Um, and when we refer to a family member, someone we know that is experiencing a mental health condition, we are actually saying that the family and the people around them will also experience that. Because when you love someone and you see them going through a mental health situation, um, you can't just walk away from it. You, you live it with them, not in their shoes, but along them. Um, so we have some statistics here. This is for, um, the State of California. Um, one in five adults experience mental illness. One in twenty adults experience serious mental illness. And seventeen percent of youth six to seventeen years experience a mental health disorder. If we move on, this is from twenty fourteen. And though it is several years ago, if we look at this, the percent of adults ever diagnosed with depression in the Antelope Valley, that is, um, a survey that was done, fifteen percent, the highest SPA during that time. If we move forward to present time, this is a s- assessment done by Children's Hospital in twenty twenty-two. Number of days, um, unable to work due to mental problems for adults in the Antelope Valley was twenty-three point four days. Um, adults seeking help for mental, emotional, and/or alcohol drug issue, fifty-four point four percent in the Antelope Valley. County of LA, if we look at this, this is, um, a report that was done. It's also included in the assessment for Children's Hospital, self-reported adult psychological distress. The increase between twenty seventeen to twenty twenty for impaired work was sixty-five point four percent. There was an increase in everything in work, family life, social life, everything that we deal with every day. If we think about why the city did this, well, back in twenty twenty with the pandemic, right? The city took on, um, an initiative and did mental town halls. And mostly of what it, you know, heard through those town halls was people's mental health. They were seeking mental health resources and they were experiencing, you know, a lot during that time. Um, the mental health town hall started between that period of time. After that, the council, um, approved for staff to move forward with the Certificate and Applied Psychology Program. From there, um, we did the, through the, um, program, a community survey was done on the state of well-being. And then in September twenty twenty-one through March twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, that should be twenty twenty-two, um, we did the CAP program. And then, um, we did impact projects in April, and we will speak about that further in the next slide. This is a very important quote that during the program, it just touched me because it says, "Psychology is not just the study of weakness and damage, it is also the study of strength and virtue." Treatment is not just fixing what is broken, it is nurturing what is best within us. And I felt that that was so perfect for the program because that is what it was. It was not fixing us, it was helping us see how we can get through with resiliency and hope. And so now I will, um, transfer it over to Luis and he is going to share some information on the results of the survey.
Well, um, I'm joining you here from, um, um, Los Angeles County in Claremont. Um, and so I'm glad to be able to join you virtually. Um, as Nardi said, I had the distinct honor of facilitating the first cohort of the CAP program, which ran from September through, um, through March of twenty twenty-two. And before we kicked off, we did a, a survey through the community of Antelope Valley. Um, we had about a thousand respondents to our survey. Um, and what we were assessing were some of the things that you see on the screen right now. Um, that we found that, um, forty percent of, around forty percent of the, um, respondents, uh, reported living well despite their struggles. Um, whereas thirty-one percent, um, were reporting, um, that they were not feeling bad, just getting by. And so what we find in our work, um, as we work with communities and workplaces to bring some positive psychology interventions is that those folks not feeling bad, just getting by are really primed for intervention, that those folks, um, may not need the same traditional kind of clinical treatments that people who are really struggling might need. And that there are more preventative ways to help people, um, move from, um, just being kind of okay to having those tools and strategies, skills and strengths that can help them navigate life's ups and downs, you know, all of it. Um, and so in this survey, we found, um, an opportunity to increase the, um, ability of Antelope Valley residents, um, to care for their well-being, their motivation to care for their well-being. And, um, um, knowing that the, the city has invested in one round of this, um, intervention, training, coaching, and, um, impact project type of program. Um, we're looking forward to, um, to continuing that work so that we can, um, help, um, some of the outcomes that you see towards the bottom of the screen here, satisfaction with life, satisfaction with family, and satisfaction with one's community, um, improve as well. Next slide, please. We define, we define well-being on the next slide, please, as, um.
Louis?
Yeah?
Mayor Portem has a question.
Oh, sure. I can't see, the camera's off for the room there, so I don't know if someone can turn it off.
So, uh, who, who was, who was polled on this?
Um, we put out the survey, um, um, through the City Manager's Office. Um, it also appeared, um, on social media, it appeared, um, on a billboard in town. So we polled, um, um, the folks that chose to respond to the survey. Nardi, do you have any other recollections of how we did that?
Yes, so we did social media, we did print ads, um, we also, I believe, we did the, um, at the mall. Louis, there was a, a, a service that went out and got, um, surveys. We did it on the radio, we did a Facebook Live event, um, we shared it on the AV Press and on all the different, um, print ad, um, platforms that we use.
Right, okay, I understand that. But, uh, so how many people actually responded to the poll or to the questions?
How many people responded to the questions?
Um, we had, uh, we had almost a thousand people respond to this question.
A thousand.
So, uh, because that, that, the first, the first statistic on here is, is surprising to me that only eighteen point nine percent said they were consistently thriving. I mean, just, uh, anecdotally, I mean, as I go about the valley here, uh, that seems like a very low, that sounds like a very low number of people who feel they're thriving. So, uh, so this is people that, uh, reached out because they were, uh, contacted through so- social media and these other, uh, this other media and that's, and they responded, that eighteen point nine percent of those out of a thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine people said they were only, only eight, one hundred and eighty-nine people said basically that they were consistently thriving. I, I just find that, that, that doesn't seem to square with what I see.
Well, it was during, it was also in July twenty during the pandemic.
During the pandemic, yeah.
So that could have a, a factor on it as well.
No, I think probably almost all of us felt that we were consistently thriving back then.
Yeah.
Okay, that, I understand that then. Today, I think it'd be a different picture then, yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, we hope, yes.
Hopefully.
No, that's not to minimize the, the, the fact that mental illness and, and people who are struggling with emotional problems, drug addiction and alcoholism is a substantial number here in this valley. There's no question about that. And we're trying as a city to do something positive about it, including what we're talking about tonight.
Yes. Okay, Louis?
Um, we define well-being as the ability to feel good, struggle well, and function effectively, um, through all of life circumstances. And, um, what you see on the slide here is a framework, um, that, uh, is an evidence-based approach to thinking about well-being, almost as if a pilot on a plane would have different indicators of how well the plane was doing at any given time. These six indicators, um, taken together, give you an in- indication as to what's going on in one's world and one's life, um, um, in terms of their well-being. And, um, the survey tool that we use is, um, assessing these components and other things, um, uh, in relationship to one's own self, one's family, and also we ask questions regarding one's community when it comes to some of these factors. The program is organized around this model. Um, and it just provides a nice framework for people to understand different, um, ways, interventions, activities, um, supports that can help one, um, attend to their emotional well-being, attend to their engagement, attend to the quality of their relationships, attend to the levels of meaning and purpose one has in one's life, um, one's, um, level of accomplishment and achievements and, and doing the things that really matter to them. And then, of course, these more foundational aspects of one's health that, um, we often think of in terms of, of wellness, in terms of, um, people's, um, exercise routines, their sleeping, uh, patterns, and, and, and how and what they're choosing to eat. So this just kind of gives you a sense of how our, our course is organized. Next slide, please. Uh, it is designed in a, um, in a hybrid way. We meet, um, live monthly and then virtually weekly to provide training and coaching opportunities. Um, like I said, organized around this perma-model. The goal is to mobilize the participants who are well-being champions around the valley to co-create together, um, engaging, um, practical and playful ways to bring more public education, uh, to the residents of Antelope Valley, um, through sharing of tools and messages, um, lots of learning events, um, to help, um, to help bring more of this to more people. The ultimate goal here is to accelerate a collective impact that can improve the, the mental health and well-being in the region. And, and, uh, we've begun and, and will continue to work to build a coalition around the region in this work.
So what's our, what's our metrics on this? So we had eight hundred and eleven people that thought they were not surviving, that they were not thriving. And the number's probably less than that at this point. And we've invested a significant amount of money into these programs. What's the metric to say it's, it's working or not working? Uh, how many people were reaching out? Is there a, is there a number, uh, that, uh, a goal from the participants? And reports back on, you know, um, what they're touching and how they've affected something? I know it's got to be something, you know, but, I mean, we, I, you know, it's one of those deals where we can tell you, you know, uh, how, how much everything is. Yeah, and relate it back to the budget and, and the impact. So how do we, how do we measure this?
Yeah, well, yeah, go ahead, Nardi.
So what I was going to say, our next slide segues right into them. Um, what it is, it's a ripple effect, right? So those that have gone through the program have now these tools and they take them and they continue to share those tools and that was part of the program. We did impact projects. So the participants, um, work together. And the list here, these are all the projects that have taken place already in the community. And as you see, there's the Senior Wellbeing Experience. So there's the Walking with a Purpose, Healing Garden Work Day, the Welcome Home Ceremony for Vietnam Veterans, the U-Women. the Welcome Home Ceremony for Vietnam Veterans, the You Women Matter Sen Academy, Reinvigorating an Entrepreneur's Workshop. There's different audiences being touched here. So we have seniors. We have community neighborhoods, the Walking with a Purpose. We have a Healing Garden. We have um the Vietnam Ceremony. We have youth. We have unhoused women. We have businesses. And that is continuing because the coalition, the members that are here right now, they're still active and they're still continuing and they're still recruiting others into the coalition. And they're still working and planning and finding a way to, you know, continue the coalition to be a standing foundation for this to continue on. And as we do another cohort, um those will join as well. And and the goal is that if you have people attend from different agencies, different industries, community members, you know, um
Different ones alike.
That, yes, that they join. And so you learn how to have a better working relationship with each other and you go out and you make a difference in the community. I mean, it's been very impactful. The Vietnam Veterans Ceremony, we received um responses from the veterans after the fact of how grateful they were and, you know, to they felt so welcome and and, you know, and appreciated. The Unhoused Women, it was an awesome event that the one of the groups did at Victory Outreach. And they had um, you know, hairdressers there and et- et- et cetera. And they were, you know, it was, it's great um impactful projects that they did. And they continue. They continue. It's 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 not going to stop. Um they're very motivated to be in the community, and I think that's what makes community, right? Our very own residents, our very own community out there, um, you know, doing alongside the city and 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 beyond, um making a difference.
So, for example, the Healing Garden Workday. So I was out there. There were quite a few of the the members
Yes.
there, and they brought in some members from the church.
Yes.
So we can quantify that that we had outside of our well-being group that we had probably two dozen people there or something like that that participated in that.
Yes.
Do we, are we able to quantify this? I think that's important to be able to tell the community that our people out here have touched X number of people outside their group.
So I know that on some other projects, surveys were done. After I know the Vietnam Veterans Project, there are surveys that were done and input was received. I know that um information was obtained as well from the youth um event that they had. So if needed, yes, there is a way to demonstrate um who they're touching and and how far it's going.
And I can say at the Vietnam uh Veterans Event, there was hundreds of people there.
There were.
It was very well attended. I was there. And uh the the You Women Matter, um Marcus was actually there with me over at Victory Out- Victory Outreach. And it had a a tremendous turnout there. It was something that was desperately needed. So, I mean, it really opened up our eyes to things that we can improve in our community. So, yes, we have the co- coalition people there, um but the public really responds to these events. It's it's really beneficial.
Yes, and there's other ones that are not listed here. I know that they were the out at the other day at the Mental Health Walk. I know they're they're um going to be at another event that they recently um shared as well.
We did a mental health walk ourselves with the community and so on.
So.
One uh one thing that uh because we have a substantial Spanish-speaking population here in in Palmdale and in Antelope Valley, is there is there any effort to uh create projects that impact uh the primarily Spanish-speaking people or other linguistic groups that might be in the city?
Yes, definitely. Um there is, we we've tried, or the coalition um as a group has tried to make sure as they plan future events and all that, that that is looked at. Um that we provide information, both English and Spanish, so that we can bring in um, you know, cover all the demographics as best as possible.
And we we have been on Spanish radio also.
Yes, we have.
Uh discussing the mental health uh issue, yeah.
Yes, we have. And actually, one of our coalition members is actually um started being on a podcast as well, speaking about the coalition and about the tools that we have learned. Um she did one the other day, which is awesome, and it speaks about one of um the character traits that we learned, right, to learn more about ourselves and about others and how to engage with them. She did an amazing job, and I know she's gonna continue doing this, doing that as well because she's gonna continue sharing the information. Okay. And so this is a few pictures of what we did and how we got together. And this is what we do, feeling good, struggling well, and functioning effectively. And now um we will invite a few of our speakers. It's gonna be um. Thank you. We're gonna have four speakers. They're gonna briefly share their experience. We had, you know, a lot more, but in essence of time, we will have four that will share information. And right now, we will call up um Laura. You're the first one.
Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. It's great to be here today. Um my name is Laura Colbush, and I was um a participant in the CAP class. And I just wanted to tell you about my experience going through that. So when this first started and I went into the class, I was not confident in who I was. I did not know my strengths, let alone bring my strengths out to the community. Uh community is a really big deal for me. I have kids here. I grew up here. I know there's a lot of good light out in Palmdale. And this class really helped highlight what is good. So through the CAP class and doing the perma-method, I learned about my strengths. I got my confidence. And through that and through the diversity of this class, I was able to be a part of programs and create events that reached out to a broad variety of groups out here. Like Nardi said, we've reached out to seniors and the youth and the homeless and vets. And I feel like because of that diversity of our group, it really does reflect back on Palmdale. And it just has nothing but good, positive things to bring. We all have the same heart and mind in this group. And it's something that I would love to see continuing to grow and out here in Antelope Valley.
That's a great story to hear.
Thank you.
What what is your interaction with people outside of your cohort? Can you kind of give us uh what your impact, what you feel, how you've helped impact other people?
I feel it shows my impact when I talk with others really does highlight what's good out here. Uh we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, right? So it's bringing it's bringing light to what is good here. We do have youth that are really interested in doing things in the community, and we want to bring them in, right? We also want to interact with the seniors out here and make them feel welcome. This is about making a family out of our community, not to single anyone out. And I feel like we do a really god, good job doing that.
Excellent answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we have Autumn Hicks.
Hi, my name is Autumn Hicks, and I just thank you for allowing me to speak here today. Um when I started this class, I was nineteen and I was really unsure of myself. But I was able to go on the journey with my grandma. She's seventy-five years old.
Yeah, wait, there you go.
I was able to join the class with her, and in that class, we learned just so many tools that were able to help grow us as a person. So one of them was the tiny habit. And for my tiny habit, I valued myself to do positive affirmations to myself in the mirror every day. And that really helped me become the twenty-one-year-old I am here today. And it has allowed me to feel empowered, and I live day by day with a positive attitude. And so today, I stand before you as a proud participant of the cla- of the CAP class. And I continue to influence the youth and all those around me by using my platforms or social media and in a nonprofit called Marsat's House. So thank you.
So let me ask you a question. How did you find out about the program?
Actually, my mom, she got an email about the CAP class. And originally, it was just gonna be my grandma. She was the one who was gonna do it. But uh I was like, oh, she's hard of hearing. So I was going to go and help her just scribe. I was just gonna be a scribe. But Nardi and Louis actually called me and said, hey, do you wanna participate in it? And so I said, yeah, of course, I'll do it. So that's why I joined.
Three generations of you have gone through this?
Yeah, just my grandma.
Or you and grandma?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Are you in school now?
Yeah, I'm in school. I'm at Cal State Fullerton. I major in communicated disorders to be a speech pathologist.
Yeah, so. Graduate as soon as possible because we need your help.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
She was our youngest participant. Um and now we have Dr. Anthony Robach, and he is actually going to attend via Zoom.
I hope that you can hear me. I'm not sure why my video's not able to come on. But hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members, distinguished leaders and community leaders. I'm Mike. My name is Dr. Anthony Robach. I'm CEO of Mind Body Spirit Counseling Services and assistant pastor at Victory Outreach Palmdale under Pastor Mike Gonzalez. I'm not here this evening because of uh uh someone under the weather. But I will say a year ago, over about a year ago, when I found out about the well-being lab, I was really interested. Not only to find out more about positive psychology, but also to get connected with some people who have a common interest of making an impact on our community. And I was able to find it there. There were city employees there. There was a a member of our esteemed police force, nonprofit organizations, for-profit organizations, faith-based organizations, and many others who had an interest to not only speak about it, but to be about it. I have been able to participate in several, uh a couple of the events that took place. The You Matter Unhoused Women Event was taking place, that took place at Victory Outreach. I was there. We had several, we had over three dozen women that were unhoused, that came out. They received showers. They received their hair, you know, hair and nails being done. They were also receiving resources, clothing. And they had a great meal that was sponsored by Chick-fil-A and Firehouse Subs. But more importantly, they're able to get connected to medical services, dental services, social services, job placement assistance, and housing opportunities. I was also able to be, as a veteran myself, with over twenty-one years of service being, I was honored to be able to speak at the Welcome Home Event for the Vietnam Vets. And I'll just say that, looking at those proud individuals who served our country, I was able to see those individuals who were saying, look, we are not here for a handout. We're here for a hand up. And I was proud to be a part of that activity. There are many other great activities that took place, but this is just the beginning. As you know, uh there's a need for continued support to improve our community. And I want to thank you all for, leaders of our community, for recognizing the need to continue to build this coalition. And I hope that you'll see us, the Antelope Valley Wellbeing Coalition, as partners, as an arm for you as you're trying to establish some new things in our community to uh make those things happen. Because as you know, it's gonna, to improve our community, it's gonna take more than one individual, more than a government entity, or any one organization, but a collaborative effort of many driven individuals in our community to make change together, to make our community the best community in the in the nation. Thank you for your continued support of this effort.
So Dr. Robach, do you see us doing more regular homeless outreach clinics? I know that they've been conducted in some forums like um basketball stadiums and things like this where you have uh dentists and hairdressers and counselors and and medical personnel, and you just go to the stations you need to go to as an individual. You can pick up a change of clothes. Uh do you see expanding that to a more regular process out here?
You know, I would love to see something like that. The great thing about this is that there's no limitations. The only limitation that we place upon ourselves are those that we're not willing to engage in. Yes, there should be some services and resources that could be in this community that people can go to a location and receive the services they need. And and if you already demonstrated, there's people in our community that are willing to do that, to step up. It's just a matter of organizing this and having a way of communicating this out through our community. And I believe that the Antelope Valley Wellbeing Coalition is one of those ways to accomplish this.
Excellent. Yeah, because I think that there's people out there that are willing to put their time and their effort into assisting an organized program as long as they know that it's that 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 they're actually doing some good here. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, and we're almost at an end. We have one more speaker. But before we go there, I would like to, I know not all the participants have, were able to come and speak and share their experience, but it's very important to point out that the ones that are here, um Lisa Sarno, Marsete, um Yolanda, Carmela, and who else, Tess and Rosie. I don't know if she's still here, but they have all been very selfless, very dedicated. A lot of these projects that have gone on has been coordinated by them. And the other participants, it's been a lot of work. They're very dedicated. And our community is very blessed to have um them in those roles. And now I bring our last speaker, who is Diana Gaddy.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much. Uh thank you, Council, for this opportunity. And it's funny because I am the gal there talking about the podcast, right? So I can really talk. However, for the first time, I felt that I did need to write down a few things, only because I know that my strength is communication. And I do this so naturally, but I didn't want to overlook something that I might forget. So I will start with this. I am a wife, a mother of two teens. I can recall receiving an email like it was yesterday informing me that the city of Palmdale is offering a certific- a certification in applied positive psychology. I knew I had to apply, although I didn't continue my en- my education in psychology like I've always dreamed of. I knew this was my drink, this was my chance. I will be honest, I couldn't afford it, but I applied anyways, hoping I would get approved for the grant. After a few months of not knowing if I would be accepted, I got an email congratulating me that I was accepted. I didn't know what I was gonna walk in, uh I didn't know what to expect when I walked in through those doors. When I did see everyone, I said to myself, these are my people. When I was introduced to the perma-method, I said, what is this? And now I know this is my toolbox. P, positive emotion. E, engagement. R, relationships. M, meaning. A, accomplishments. And H, health. Did you know that losing ninety minutes of sleep is equivalent to drinking a six-pack of beer? Now I understood why it was so groggy when I would lose sl- sleep, right, over sleepless nights. To thrive, you need to co- you need to cultivate each perma-pillar. How much you need and how much you need of each will vary depending on the type of person that you are, the situation that you're in, and the outcome that you want. I knew I struggled with positive emotions, but I was strong in relationship, so Lois had my attention. As we progressed in the CAP, I never felt so safe, so heard. I was building my psychological safety. When I learned about my character's strength, I knew it reassured me of my purpose. I said to I said to myself, we need to teach this to our youths. Can you only imagine if we would have known this when we were young? Oh, God, what will our, what will our future look like? Hence the reason why I'm so passionate to be a part of the youth and family program, where we do do outreach to our local high schools. I will leave you with this. Although every day we might struggle, that doesn't mean we can struggle well and function effectively. My name is Diana Gaddy, and my character's strength is love. I call it my superpower. Thank you. I am the one that's doing the podcast, and I actually invited Mike, who I met actually in the community, reaching out. I actually uh do also balloons, but I sometimes say, maybe that was just an excuse to push me out of the house, to get out there and do what I do, right? So I was lucky enough to meet Mike at a mixer, and I heard him speaking. And everything that he was doing, those were the tools that we had learned in this CAP program. And I told Mike, I wanna do what you're doing because I have my toolbox with me. And I was ready to share this with the community that I am now a part of, where I am raising my two kids and my husband that works at Northrup, where here in the community is so uh it's such a big part, right? And I think to my, I used to think to myself, well, I'm just a stay-at-home mom. Well, I'm not just that. That is actually my contribution back to society. Implement or teaching my kids these tools where they can share that with their peers, where I'm not directly right next to them every step of the way, but at least I could reassure that I've been teaching them those tools that are in my toolbox.
That's great. Does your podcast work? I mean, where do you put it out there?
Um you know what? We actually, it has been um already in the works. Actually, Officer Schaefer was also one of the this guest speakers. And he actually um unintentionally mentioned, hey, there's a group that's called the AV Wellbeing Coalition out there. And I text Mike, Mike, I cannot wait until I hop on there. But what I realized at that moment is that our community wants to know about these tools. And what better way than to share that through my experience by being vulnerable? When I used to think being vulnerable was weak, but in fact, that is my superpower. That is my. When I used to think being vulnerable was weak, but in fact, that is my superpower. That is my strength. To be able to share what I used to think was my weakness, but in reality was my true strength. And that's kind of how I talk on the podcast.
And that concludes our presentation.
How do we, uh, how do we link to her podcast? Is it linked on our Wellbeing page?
It, it will.
It will. She is working on it.
And Nadia, do you want to tell people how to get to the Wellbeing link or the Wellbeing page or Facebook page?
The AV Wellbeing Coalition has a website, and it is theavwellbeingcoalition.com. Um, and they have information on there about how to join the Coalition. It has information about what projects they, they have worked on, um, donations. They have, um, been approved to have a fiscal agent. So, they are forming, and, um, you know, they're taking donations and recruiting others and any partnerships. Um, they are accepting that and encouraging it.
So, all the people that are here tonight that are linked to the Wellbeing Coalition that are here, may we have them stand and...
Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, that was good.
All right, that's a very good presentation despite the intermittent, uh, camera feeds. So, uh, thank you very much. Okay, uh, number thirteen, we are at now, public comments on non-agenda items. This portion of the agenda allows for an individual to address the council on any subject. It's gotta be within a subject matter of the jurisdiction, uh, but it's not on the agenda. Under state legislation in general, no action can be taken on items not specifically referenced to any agenda, but we may offer suggestions on your concerns on how it may best be resolved. To address the council on a non-agenda item, you need to have a speaker slip in there now. Fill out the speaker's form and submit it to the city clerk before the mayor announces the item. Each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak, but double the time allotted for non-English speakers if they're using a translator. Uh, the amount of time authorized can be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please provide, present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending by, uh, meeting by phone, uh, please press nine to raise your hand, as if you didn't know that. Uh, if attending by personal computer, again, you know, click the raise your hand button, uh, with the star six to unmute yourself when your name is called. Um, IT, you got anybody? Oh, just in time to adjourn. Yeah, almo- almost, almost. Anything?
Yes, we do. Uh, we have Juan. Go ahead, Juan.
What's it, you got a name or number on that? So, they know?
Hello?
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. My name is Juan Vazquez. I live in, uh, Palmdale. I'd like to express my support for more rooftop solar here in Palmdale. Uh, not, not only does it save me money on my energy bill, but rooftop solar is good for keeping the lights on during blackouts, reducing our dependence on the grid, and helping the environment, just to name a few. I support solar being as easy as possible to get here in Palmdale. And we're here tonight to talk about an easy way to make it more accessible. When cities automate their process for solar permits, not only the time it takes, but the price for solar goes down. There's this new system called Solar App that is free for cities to use. There's even a grant from the state that would do exactly that. There's also a petition going around with hundreds of signatures from Palmdale residents calling for a switch to an automated solar permitting system. Thank you for supporting solar. Have a great evening. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. I believe there's actually some state legislation coming down on that very exact item. So, thank you very much for supporting that. Uh, IT?
Uh, nobody else.
Thank you very much. City clerk, do you have any speaker slips, please?
Ricky Pacheco.
Ricky? Welcome.
Hello. Um... I am a Palmdale youth, and I am concerned on the judgment, the judgment, the judgment... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just take a deep breath, man. You're good.
My bad, my bad. I am concerned on the judgment of several city council members who supported Dave Gomez, the deputy mayor of, of Lancaster for Palmdale District Three. And I'm concerned that their judgment, eh, their judgment in making decisions of the youth will be clouded or influenced by Lancaster's deputy mayor. I'm sorry, I'm just a little nervous.
You know, the election's over.
Yeah, but I still feel that even though it may be over, the, the decisions that could be coming up could be influenced or changed due to the support.
Thank you.
Of course.
City clerk?
Kenya Lopez.
Yes, hello. Can I do something?
I'm sorry, what? She's calling the names here, so... I can't hear you at all. Okay.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am a member of this city, lovely, beautiful city of Palmdale, so I have a couple of concerns. And my question and concerns is actually directed towards Councilmember Bishop Carrillo Loa. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. I mispronounced that. Mayor Hoffbauer. So, how does it feel to have committed treason against your fellow councilwoman Laura Bennencourt? Even worse, treason against the city of Palmdale by endorsing and supporting a Lancaster deputy mayor, Dave Gomez? Excuse my voice, I'm upset. Because I feel betrayed. He's running for a Palmdale seat, and you guys supported and endorsed him. We understand that. Part of my concern is, are you guys part of an arrangement or involvement with the city of Lancaster for a secret agenda that may affect the city of Palmdale? Is that what we're doing? Because if it does, it, it affects me. It affects my children. I grew up here. I went to school here. I moved out. I came back because I love Palmdale. This has nothing to do about Laura in particular. And the reason why I actually support Ms. Bennencourt is because I've seen her do a lot and plant a seed around Palmdale. She was my professor while I attended college at ABC. She nourished, she taught me things that no one ca- cared about. I see her doing all sorts of events. And to me, it's so disgusting that you can sit there side by side to her, and we find out through a mailer that comes out, not even the decency, to say that this is what you do. This has nothing to do with whether the election is over or not. This has to do whether your decisions on what you do for the city of Palmdale, is there a secret agenda that you have with the city of Lancaster, and that it may affect those of us who actually live in Palmdale? Those of us who actually want to have youth programs in Palmdale. And I'm angry, and I in particularly feel betrayed by you guys attempting to bring in somebody with a very, very agenda that goes against what Palmdale stands for. So, that is my question. How do you feel knowing that you did this to her and knowing that you did this to me as a resident of Palmdale? Because you saw your look after our best interests, my children's best interests. And I don't feel that, not after seeing this, the fact that you guys endorsed it. Thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to give us that you...
I'm sorry?
Did you have something there?
No, this is my fault.
Okay, you were, you were referring that you saw something. I'm just wondering.
Oh, I mean, I can show it to you. I mean, there's a melter that went out, too. How many was it? Fifteen hundred melters that went out in the city?
Okay.
So, I'm sure you'll find one anywhere. You supported it, so you should have a copy.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for it, so I don't recall seeing it.
No, well, your name is printed in this melter.
Okay. Thanks.
Have a great day.
Great, and I know how you, I know how you feel.
I'm taken and angry, just so you understand.
Welcome to the club.
It's disrespectful. You guys disrespected Palmdale.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. City clerk?
Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink? Welcome back up, sir.
Uh, Juan, I'd like to congratulate you for your seat, uh, representing us as State Assemblyman. And I hope you remember three things that you need for your district. Higher education, commuters, fight for the commuters, bring awareness to them, and bring an Antelope Valley Opportunities Zone. Those three things. Uh, I was disgusted when I went to go see my nephew play at Polo Vista Park. The conditions of the park, we just approved Measure ABSL tax measure, gives us twenty-four million dollars more every year, and this park had dead grass, gopher holes. It was despicable. We need to fix it. Uh, as far as this mental health thing, I like it, but we need a mental health study on our commuters. So, we have a report, a study, so we can bring, take it to the county and the state to bring resources to fix this job problem. So, a half a million dollars, I'm just asking for fifty thousand dollars. How about that? You guys spent a half a billion dollars on this. How about, you know, these people could also join community clubs, and they'd also have pretty good mental health, too, being involved in the community. Not to put them down or anything, but, uh, also, the meeting delay? I want you guys to start promptly at seven o'clock. We're not waiting for you people. You can do your five o'clock meeting after we leave. No more disrespecting us. Also, on, uh, these reports, there needs to be public input on these reports. These aren't city manager reports or city council reports. These are reports that we just spent a half a million dollars on. The public has the right to have input on these reports. And as far as, I've been doing real estate for over thirty years, buyers will tell you anything. They will extend escrows indefinitely if they can. Now, what did we get as collateral for the two point seven five million? Did the guy put up his house? Did he put up stocks and bonds of the company? What did we get? Oh, it just goes towards the land. Oh, so if the deal falls apart, our money's tied up, right? And then, the best thing for this property is it to go before, uh, to go under control of the county or the state. So, they can say, then we push them and say, "Hey, you got a hundred and eighteen acres here. Bring those jobs up over here, LA County, State of California." I, the lack of strategy, the lack of common sense, the lack of, I don't know, I'm free. You can give me a call. I'll tell you everything about real estate. But for you guys, just to give a personal loan, I'm coming back here next week after Turkey Day. Uh, you guys all have a great Turkey Day. But I'm gonna ask you for two point seven five million for my project. And I want, I, I'd like you to give it to me and give me six months to pay it back. Thank you.
Need a better explanation on that, so we can talk more.
I know, but you guys should have put that property up for sale and put it on the MLS a long time ago.
You're preaching it to folk to me.
I know, but you're mayor. You've been here for twenty years. The property should have, I know. But the thing is, this, everything should be above table. No more deals under the table in Palmdale.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marcos Alvarez?
Mr. Alvarez?
Good evening, Council. That program that you guys have with CAP, uh, for those who don't know, like myself, I haven't looked at the website. Uh, maybe it hasn't all been, been publicized, and that is the cost, and what is the criteria to qualify? Because as, as they demonstrated, there are a lot of people that need this program as we speak. So, I hope, uh, number one, it's a great thing that you guys are doing, because I know I've been emphasizing the issues happening with teenagers, like I have myself, and the challenges that they face leaving out here in the Antelope Valley. So, uh, if we can demonstrate further the cost that it takes and the qualifying criteria for any whom, whom may need it at this time. And another thing I want to address is, number one, congratulations to Ms. Bennencourt, okay? Well deserved, and she will continue to represent the Palmdale Cares, uh, mission that we, we have. And of course, to Mr. Carrillo, I know he will, uh, commit, once again, not just for the West, but the East, but throughout the entire valley, bringing resources back so we can continue to grow and make this and continue to make Palmdale an equitable place to live in. And finally, I want to say is, uh, this state mandated when it comes to housing, and I know those are challenging projects here because they're state mandated, affordable housing, whether it be east or west, it has to get done. So, uh, I did have a few conversations with some of your staff. The one over on the east side, uh, just, uh, west of, uh, Knight High School. I pass by there every day, take my daughter to school. Uh, and I will tell you, my first observation, it doesn't look like housing. It looks like a prison, like a juvenile hall, if you will, right? And why does it look like that? Because of the surroundings around it, and that's a brick wall, a gray brick wall. So, I can vent like anybody else here, but I have a solution that may help, which I've already discussed with some of your staff, and that is this. I believe you guys have, or you deal with someone who deals with art and murals, and they have projects. So, if it hasn't been already done, or I'm not reinventing the wheel, but maybe throwing some artwork around those brick walls, which can make it more presentable. You have your pros and cons because they are affordable housing, because you have permanent housing, people there. And I get it, and it's a tough subject to talk about, but this may lift the, the presence of the, how the community looks in the east side, okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good stuff, sir. Very good, very good.
Rosie Mayonella?
Hi, Rosie. Good to see you again.
How are you doing?
Great.
I'm glad everybody's healthy. Uh, well, again, congratulations for those of you who kept your seats, won new seats, et cetera. And I know that you guys are gonna do a great job. Um, I wanted to thank you for, um, the loan of the Cultural Center. We're gonna be having an event on Friday, um, at ten AM on the eighteenth, and it's going to talk about mental health. We've invited Dr. Perry, who is a pediatric psychiatrist. And he's going to be, um, leading us on talking about trauma. Um, talking about trauma, how it affects us, how it leads us into drug addiction, um, and other addictions. But, um, many different ways about dealing with it and what happens, and how to deal with generational trauma. Apparently, since if we don't work through our own traumas, we just go ahead and give it back to our children. And so, um, we keep on having generations of kids who are suffering what we went through. So, um, it's only gonna be an hour that he's going to be speaking, and then after that, we're gonna be talking about well-being. So, I'm inviting all of you. It's, um, at the Cultural Center on Friday at ten AM. And thank you for your time.
I'll be there for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
City clerk?
Jasmine Alvarez?
Jasmine? Hi, thanks.
Woo, I got a little something in my throat, so just bear with me, please. So, there's always a lot to say personally. Um, ew. Um, I'm not an expert, but I know what, um, white supremacy looks like in the form of politicians and in governing, especially in the Antelope Valley area. We have all this data, all these statistics showing us, um, and even just look at the news with what's going on with LAPD, LEIC, any police department in America right now. I'm saying that because it applies to you, in my opinion, Mr. Hoffbauer, and to a lot of other people, because there's a lot of money out here that doesn't go to the east side, doesn't go to Palmdale when it comes to youth, when it comes to acknowledging the homelessness, when it comes to acknowledging mental health, well-being for minor, minority communities. Um, and I've felt all the effects of every statistic as a woman of color, as a Latina in the Antelope Valley. There's a history of skinheads out here. I don't know if you've heard about that, but it's, it all ties to the same, uh, historical dark history of America because we experience it all the time. People of color, black people, um, Asian people, et cetera. And I'm just saying because that is very important, and it makes sense as to why all these laws, all these things that we bring up to you, psychology, these great programs, it makes perfect effort to invest into programs like that because there's almost eight million... because there's almost eight million Americans with depression and anxiety. Why? And how, why are we not addressing that correctly? Why are we letting it go on for so long? And I'm sorry, but your comments, Mr. Hoffbauer, to that kid over there and to the woman who is clearly upset, you, what's going on? Are you like fifteen, like you need to like, you're, you're a human, you're almost, you're older than me. Why am I have to remind you to do your job correctly? The, no more, uh, combative talk, like, oh, welcome to the club, what the hell is that? Yeah, yeah, have a nice day.
Thank you. And I would, I would encourage you to get, what, do we have somebody here from, uh, so, see Lynn over there? She can show you the capital improvement plan and budget. And, uh, probably Nardi can show you the city budget and where, where that's going. So, uh, um, when we talk about programs and stuff like that. Because there seems to be a, uh, not a very accurate, um, perception on, on how the budget goes. So, okay, city clerk?
No more public comments.
All right, uh, city manager, anything to report?
I think that we will just let the cap class speak for, um, our accomplishments and what's forthcoming. Uh, other than a couple of, um, other business openings, I think we'll let that stand for the evening is the good news.
Thank you. All right, we'll stand adjourned and, oh, before we adjourn...
I, I do have, um, one minor correction.
He's gonna clean up my closed session comment.
So, I apologize, I was not here, I needed to address, uh, an issue. So, as far as the report out from closed session, I do need to report that the city council did authorize the initiation, um, litigation and existing actions to authorize cross complaints, um, once those are, once. And any other particulars will be, um, disclosed to any person upon inquiry once, uh, that has been initiated.
Thank you. Um, and before we adjourn, so our next meeting is...
December seventh.
December seventh. But the problem is, is that we may not have election results in by the county in time. Can we tentatively then schedule a meeting for the fourteenth, a week later?
We can, so we are holding that date right now, the, the, um, just for the public's education, uh, the canvas is not considered complete until December fifth. Um, and then that notification is sent out and it's sent to the board of supervisors on the sixth. Our meeting is scheduled for the seventh, our regularly scheduled city council meeting, and we do need time to advertise the meeting accordingly. We can do it with twenty-four hour notice. However, to provide additional notification and additional opportunity to prepare, we would recommend to have it on the fourteenth, or we can go as regularly scheduled on the twenty-first, it councils, um, discretion. Your choice.
Okay. All right, um, I understand that there's a, we still have, we have not adjourned yet.
There's a person that's wanting to speak.
City attorney, can we...
There's a hand up.
Apparently, we missed that person because of problems with the Zoom connection?
Uh, no, they put up their hands after we did the public speaking. So, we actually have two individuals, Sandra Flauk and Kathy McLaren.
What's the council's pleasure?
They'll talk.
I, I think it's, um, good policy to allow them to speak.
All right, IT? Call the first one?
Sandra, you can go ahead.
What's her name?
Sandra.
Sandra? You're up, time's running.
Okay, uh, sorry, it's my wife's, uh, name.
Okay.
Uh, I'm just calling about, you know, about the, uh, solar initiative. Uh, I know the government wants us to go, you know, clean energy. And, uh, I have my solar panels installed on twenty seventeen. They work great, but you know, it would be nice if they do the, uh, solar APP. So, it will make it easier because, uh, you have to wait for the Arizona or whoever is your, you know, power company, and it takes a while. So, that will cut into the, the cut, the red tape and all that. Otherwise, you know, it would be nice if everybody can afford it also.
Thank you, I think we're moving in that direction, so, okay. Thank you. IT?
Thank you. Okay, Kathy McLaren, you can speak now.
Ma'am? You're up?
Yes, um, good evening. Um, I, I first would like to say I, I'm, I'm very happy about that cap program. I only feel bad that I, I couldn't see some of the people that spoke as well as, um, being cut out. Um, our election is over and, and congratulations, Juan, as well as congratulations are from Dave Gomez and me to Laura Bennencourt, who we have always supported. Um, all this talk of Dave Gomez being the deputy of Lancaster and all those other things that were out there portrayed are, are not things that are true. Um, Palmdale and Lancaster are working together and as a region, better together. So, um... I just want to say that I really hope to work together. Being a, uh, coming out and even being willing to run, to make change instead of just complaining is what elections are about. It was nothing personal to who we ran against, who he ran against. It was, if we see something not being done in our community, instead of just complaining about it, I'm elected official. We, we choose in our household to run and try to make things better. This is all about making everything better for all of us. And we plan to work with everybody. And I hope the villains are mutual for the other people that were elected to those seats. And they will not continue propagating this negative smears, lies, as well as all the list of things that Laura Bennencourt's daughter wrote and, and made slanderous remarks, which if we wanted to, we could have a law group. But we're not, that's not what we're about, but making serious accusations.
Like the mailers that you sent? Like the mailers that you sent lying about me? Let's talk about lies, Kathy, if you wanna talk about it publicly.
All right, all right.
You know what? You're talking about lies.
Has been plenty of that come both ways, let's go.
Yeah, I, I can't believe that...
We can talk.
I, 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 she's done.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy, you still on?
It's just ridiculous that she's talking about lies, but yet the hit mailers they put out on me and the videos they put out on me were absolute bald-faced lies. She has no room to talk about lies.
Well, there you go, that's what elections are currently all about in this valley.
You started a very negative campaign coming to my house and putting things at my house. You did negative campaigns and...
Okay, let's, okay, so ma'am, it's your, it were your, your rules you brought up about not a demand turn.
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
It's good for us, tell the truth though. The truth is, none of those things that you made in your cartoon were true.
Okay, that's it, we're good, thank you very much.
I'd like to comment one thing. We, we live in a democracy. We have the freedom to run candidates, we have the freedom to support candidates.
You get freedom to run against me.
Was it any different when Ms. Bennencourt ran against Mr. Hoffbauer? Did Mr. Hoffbauer, uh, did, did Ms. Bennencourt commit treason against Mr. Hoffbauer because she ran against him? No, she had the right to do that. As Ms. Bennencourt, as, as Ms., uh, McLaren said, we're trying to work as a region, and I'm hoping, Mr. Correa, that in the assembly, you're going to promote that.
He goes across the border there.
It doesn't mean that we're conceding anything or that we're combining anything. It means that we're going to deal with problems as a regional group. We have a right to run. That's right, you do.
Everybody's got...
We live in a great country.
So, I'm gonna need to get this back in here because it, we're, it's getting into a personal battle between each other and, uh, and some pretty, uh, pretty outrageous comments here. So, we're gonna, we're, that's it, unless we have any other business to conduct, the meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, we're done.